I'm going to read our opening statement, which gives us some procedure we're going to follow this evening. We're both virtual and in-house, so we have a certain procedure we've been doing. And so, good evening. This is the regularly scheduled October 27th meeting of the Geneva Planning and Zoning Commission. I am Scott Stocking, Chairman of the Commission. Tonight, for the benefit of those audience, I am joined by Commissioner John Mead, Commissioner Mim Evans, Commissioner Rebecca Holman, Commissioner Mike Slifka, and Commissioner Adam Miskell. We have Assistant Planner Mike Fusing and City Planner Chayton True. Virtual attendees may watch or participate in a livestream meeting by accessing the link provided in the meeting agenda found on the city's website at www.geneva-il.us. For more information about meeting procedures or providing public comment, please see Notice Regarding Meeting and Public Comment Rule Modification and a link to which is provided on the agenda for the meeting this evening. This evening, the Commission will host a public hearing regarding Agenda 5A. As the Chairman of tonight's meeting, I will guide the public applicant and the Commission through the public hearing process, which is outlined in the back of the meeting agenda. Please see this page for further details. The Commission will open the public hearing, and the applicant will provide an opening statement and brief overview of the request. Commissioner members will have, first, the opportunity to ask questions and make comments. This will be followed by a public comment and testimony regarding the requests. Audience members will be called on virtually or in person and given an opportunity to comment. We ask that you state your name and address when it is your turn to speak. If your comment has already been made, or your question has already been asked, it is not necessary to repeat it. We remind members of the public to refrain from varying off-topic and direct comments that are relevant to the requests being considered. Following the end of the public testimony, the applicant will have an opportunity to provide a closing statement and comprehensively answer any questions or respond to any of the comments made from members of the public. Additional questions or comments may be stated by the Commission, but the public comment will not be reopened. The public hearing may then be closed, followed by the Commission's deliberation and on the separate requests. Any person speaking during the public hearing agree to understand that anything they say will be considered sworn testimony and affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Commissioners, please state your name prior to speaking and prior to providing a roll call to better assist our record keepers, for example, Stocking, yea, nay, or abstain. Okay? So that's how we proceed with this evening's meeting. Are there any questions?
Mead.
Mead here.
Evans.
Evans here.
Slifka.
Slifka here.
Holman.
Holman here.
Mataskiel.
Mataskiel here.
Moran.
Stocking.
Stocking here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you very much. Next item is approval of the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Evans, move to approve.
Second, Slifka.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, none. For approval of minutes, I guess we'll have that in our next meeting, all right, Chayton?
Correct.
So typically, we have that immediately, but we'll have it for the next meeting. The next item is the public hearing, item 5A, 729 Hawthorne Lane, lot coverage variation, a request for a variation from Section 11-5E-4, lot area requirements to increase the permitted lot total coverage from 40 to 53.54 percent. The location is 729 Hawthorne Lane. The applicant is Eric Galloway of Western DuPage Landscaping on behalf of Nina Kolesinski?
Kolesinski.
Kolesinski, that was close. I got a little credit on that. Okay, I think I'll swear everybody. Okay, please, if you're planning on giving testimony this evening, please rise and raise your right hand. I have to swear you in. Yep, just you're going to speak in the meeting.
Just be safe.
In case you have to speak. Do you solemnly swear that testimony you're about to give is the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, so, okay, we have some items on the record.
Yes. So the file, or the contents of this file include an application for a variation to lot coverage for the property located at 729 Hawthorne Lane dated August 9th, 2022, filed by Eric Galloway of Western DuPage Landscaping on behalf of Nina Kolesinski.
Great.
Okay. Including the following items: project narrative, or the letter of intent, response to variation standards, existing and proposed plot of survey, list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, affidavit attesting to the accuracy of the list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property. The contents of this file also includes a copy of the letter to all property owners within 500 feet, providing notice of the application being filed, a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on October 12th, 2022, for tonight's public hearing, a copy of the public hearing notice mailed to all property owners within 500 feet, and a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated October 27th, 2022.
All right, thank you, Chayton. All right, we'll hear from the applicant.
Hi, thank you for hearing us out here regarding this project. Kind of a unique one in the sense that we're already over the lot square footage, the max. And so, the question is, what do we do? Well, we went ahead and we submitted our drawings for permit, and they got rejected, and here we are. We looked into it more, told we have to apply for the variance, and speaking with the homeowner, talked about some different options, you know, on how to get there. The biggest things that are taking place, basically, in the front yard. I know that you guys have seen all the plans that were submitted on the plot of survey, and what I want to do is show some pictures of the house that we're dealing with to hopefully make it a little bit more practical here. Whoops, where's this mouse? I need a little tech help here.
She's on her way.
Oh, it's here, yes, sorry. I thought it was this guy. Okay, thank you very much. So this is a series of photos here that are from Hawthorne, looking back towards the property. You can see in the foreground, in the picture to the left, you've got the curb, and then the clay brick driveway that leads straight back up into the house. Off to the left, you'll see the side-load garage, which was done in 2000. So basically, it's a 90-degree angle, or it appears to be a 90-degree angle, and the homeowner has a very difficult time making that turn with her vehicle. So she's got a Ford F-350 pickup truck that has a turning radius of, a minimum turning radius of 26 and 1/2 feet. You can see this picture over here, that's looking at the concrete driveway portion, so it would be in front of the house and adjacent to the side-load garage. And then, looking back from the south, looking north, see the transition between the clay brick and the existing concrete driveway. So the main issue that the homeowner has with the existing driveway is the fact that it's in disrepair. The clay brick is starting to spall and shale and crack, and it's not a antique brick, like a street paver that you would see, like a Perrington paver. It is a clay brick. I don't know the make and model and manufacturer, so I don't know any ASTM testing certifications or anything, but it's starting to fail. And then the concrete, which we'll see here, is starting to crack as well. So this isn't something that she just wants to replace because she doesn't like the looks of it. It's starting to, in the winter, freeze. There's really poor drainage here, so water sits. It's not graded properly. That's all ice that you see here, and that's up against the garage where it meets these existing steps. And then, over here, you'll see the cracks that are starting to form, not on the control joints, and they run the width of the driveway. So we're starting to have some issues. She'll also, in a heavy rain, will get some back into the garage doors. It'll seep through, and then she'll have some standing water inside the garage as well. You can see here, this is just some remnants of water sitting for a while, the darker color there. This is a berm here. It's kind of raised up, and the grade's really flat. It's my understanding that this property had two driveways, one on the very north side, and then one on the south side. And when the side-load garage was added 20-something years ago, they kind of just made everything match up and made it work. We're also getting some rot on the wood trim over here, too, and this is in the corner of the garage. So the other issue that we have is a stoop. So when Nina first called Western DuPage Landscaping out and said, hey, you know, I really want to make this stoop prettier. I don't like it. It's going up to the front of my house, and it's all uneven. You can see some waves in here. You can see the big crack that's a structural issue in the foundation. Okay, so we can talk, we can do this, we can do that. There's several different types of materials we can use. When I did the measurements on this, I was just baffled of how this got installed and why it got installed this way, how it passed code. It's not safe, not, you know, not even counting the crack here. All the riser heights are off. You can actually visually see the difference just in a picture. This decorative pillar here on top of the coping, and, you know, these gaps here and these different elevations, I'm not really sure what's going on here. Another crack in the center of the porch. Again, that looks superficial, but the fact that it's really kind of following the same line, well, what's going on? How was it built? Who inspected it? Was it inspected? I don't know what's going on with it right now. I'm assuming it's a water issue, and the base isn't sufficient. So, kind of hard for us to stand behind our products or our projects capping something like this when, you know, our project's only as good as the base that we're putting it on. So, some other issues, too. So this used to be, I believe, Nina, correct me if I'm wrong, the old, an old access before the addition was put on. So here's the corner of the garage, the new side-load garage, and you can see these steps, concrete. These are old. You can tell the difference in concrete there. So they're at an angle to everything, which isn't ideal. Walking up or walking down, most importantly, walking down, it's just, it's strange to walk. We don't walk that way. And then you can see here, this concrete toe sticking out past this, the wood trim, too. This is just a huge hazard. What is hard to maybe make out, though, is the pitch. So this landing here pitches across this riser, and it gets higher as you come down to this corner here, which, again, is a safety hazard. It doesn't meet the minimum code, or the maximum, excuse me, code of seven and 3/4-inch riser. And, again, here's a picture of where the water just kind of pools and freezes. Another shot of that crack that's going in to that bottom step, and all the different heights. You can see the waviness even in the concrete. Even if we replaced or repaired this crack, the riser heights in relationship to the grade of the driveway don't allow us to cap it with any type of a natural stone or a brick, because the heights are going to be thrown off. And then this is the other main issue here, too, where this is the main porch going to the front door, and then you step down to this level to step up to that level to get into the house, which, that's top of concrete, and there's your threshold. That's at 8 and 1/4 inches right now. That's just the door jamb. That's not even counting the threshold that's up here. It's out of code by...
It's out of code.
...by lot. That's a safety hazard. And we've got, Nina wishes to, you know, eventually replace her walkways. This is located along the south foundation of the house, another access door here, existing clay pavers, same ones that matched the driveway. And we've got a unilock wall material clay brick here, and you can see a little bit of settling, and this white-ish line here is how far it's settled. So, again, the door height here is unsafe and needs to be replaced. All we're trying to do is replace, you know, really what's there. These sequence of pictures, so this is on the left here. I'm in the backyard shooting out towards Hawthorne Lane. So this is the three-foot wide, or four-foot wide brick path that leads you. Here's the side access door there. We just want to change the material out to something different. And then it transitions, as you wrap the corner, to this flagstone stepper path. You see here, and then again here, which leads to the patio. So we've got a lot of different things going on. She needs access to the back, just wants it all to be conducive, same material. And then, existing patio, we're not going to do anything with it, except, hopefully, she wants to add a fireplace back here on the edge, this back edge. It meets code based off of being away from structures and everything, but we're actually going to save some square footage. We're going to reduce the patio size to accommodate the dimensions of the fireplace. And then, this is the back sliding glass door, big porch in the back, concrete, all existing. She just wants to cap it with natural stone. So it would be the same square footage. We're not adding anything to it. And then here's another shot looking back. So the fireplace would go back over here. It's approximately three feet deep, so she's losing, she doesn't have a very big back patio anyways. Everything's going to get pushed closer to the house if she decides to go forward with that fireplace. The one thing that we are going to cut out is this little rectangle here. That's where this bench is, and we're really trying, guys, to save everything we can. So we're about 1,500 square feet over. If you do the math on the existing driveway, we would have to remove the existing driveway just to come close to breaking even on things. She's been in the house just over a year when she contacted us and inherited a lot of this. That is it for the pictures. Any questions on what we saw here?
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners?
No questions.
Yes, go ahead, Rebecca.
So, just so I'm understanding, the little stairs in the front that were kind of up against the garage?
Correct, yep.
That's going away? Those stairs are going to be...
Yes. So what we're trying to do there, because, again, we're getting into tight quarters to get there anyways, and with the riser heights and trying to, what we want to do is, we want to fill in, I don't know why my mouse isn't working here, sorry, guys. What we want to do is, thank you so much. All right, thanks. All righty, thank you so much. So let me skip over to that step there. So because these steps are at this different angle, and how they work in relationship to the other stoop, we just thought, let's close this off and then, and wall it off. We'll have to put, it'll be some kind of a stone wall of sorts, and then a railing or either or, basically. But the other, the big thing is, we want to make sure, here we go. So like, this level right here, we want it all to be one level. We want to make this all one flat level. So the grades don't work out because we're starting to get close to the garage door bay. So, yeah, remove these, wall it off here, and just have your main stairs be your main entrance.
And then, then to address the issue of the water seeping into the garage, when you redo the driveway, it'll just be all graded differently?
Yeah, we're also proposing to put a trench drain in there, so a channel drain that runs parallel with the front, move it away from the garage. And then, because we're going to just bypass those steps on the left and then completely redo the front porch steps, that allows us to determine the grades to get it to work out the way we want. Then we're also going to put a drain on the inside of this wall as well, just for anything that might blow in, and we don't want to trap it up against the backside of the wall. That would tie into the channel drain as well.
Okay.
Does that answer?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Any other questions at this point? Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Did you look into any options to try to improve the coverage that you have by using some kind of permeable surface or any other creative ways that you might be able to make some changes while you're at this project?
Yes, so, Chayton, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, we met to discuss this last winter, early spring, and we were talking about that. My understanding is that it's a lot coverage issue, and it doesn't matter if it's permeable or not. So, is that, we would be open to it, but it wouldn't have helped us here with a lot coverage issue.
Yeah, I understand that. The question was, just kind of a good faith effort to try to mitigate a problem, which I understand the homeowner inherited. I don't, doesn't look like you did incorporate anything.
Yeah, we'd be open to that. That was one of the ideas before we applied for the variance. If it was an option, we would have done that at that time. But we do more and more permeable patios and walkways and driveways. You know, every city's got a little bit different zoning ordinance, but yes, we would totally be up for that.
So if they're amenable to that, is that something we can write into the variance?
Yes. One second. Yes. It is possible. I think that the Commission just needs to be very clear what hazards or damage would be mitigated if that was a condition placed on the variance. And by that, I mean, you probably need to identify that there's some stormwater issues in the neighborhood. This would help alleviate that issue, but just be clear in the discussion that that's the purpose of doing that.
Would we have to specify how much would be permeable surface or where it would be located, or how could you word such a thing?
You could target it for the driveway. I mean, it might be a discussion with the applicant as to exactly where that could apply, if it's acceptable to place it just in the driveway or elsewhere.
It could be everywhere. We, a lot of times, it's a lot coverage issue. We do a lot of work in Glen Ellen, Wheaton, and Downers, and Glen Ellen, in particular, there's a lot of, everything's kind of leaning towards permeable. As a solution, Elmhurst, they require dry wells for, you know, it's all a big formula that's based on all the impervious surfaces. And so they, like in Elmhurst, for instance, they'll tell you what you need in storage, and we add it in that way. Or, you know, we already know what that is, so we add that in. But we could do permeable base for the driveway and all the other associated walks. The question is, how much is it going to help? Now, it's all based on the volume that's going to hold, and we do all those calcs, so.
Yeah, so there was a question about the effectiveness of permeable pavers, and we tried to do some research, and it would be effective to alleviate some stormwater runoff on the property, which would then help the municipal infrastructure in the area that's, according to Public Works, does have some issues right now.
Right.
And also, just one little note with the permeable paver question, is that we just, I think, needs to be discussion on, is it unreasonable to place this condition on the applicant and have that discussion?
Thank you.
Yes, John?
Like Mim, or Commissioner Evans, I'm sympathetic to the fact that the homeowner essentially inherited this non-conforming condition, but I'm also sensitive to the conditions in the area. The code was developed in order to maintain or limit the amount of lot coverage so that the water can be contained on the specific sites. And at 13 and 1/2, 13.75 percent above the 40 percent, it's essentially a 30, just shy of 35 percent above the existing allowed, you know, coverage. So that's 35 percent of the area that's not available, then, to absorb the water. So it goes into the street, goes into the stormwater system. We see things happen, like Public Works has talked about in the email or letter from the Ellenbaums that came to us this afternoon that has the house on Shady Lane. So I, too, would be receptive to some discussion on permeable pavers. I spent some time not understanding the effectiveness of them, but understand they are effective, but I also just wanted to see what they look like. You know, you don't want to burden the homeowner with something that, sure, this works and allows more water to stay on site, but it's completely unattractive. There's a lot of nice permeable paver driveways and walkways that are very durable and allow the water to stay on site, or much more of it, you know. So if we can have that discussion, I think that's, that, in my mind, goes to your point of, we have to, if we're going to set a condition, there has to be something we're trying to mitigate or something we're trying to solve. And I think we're trying to keep as much water on site and not have it go offsite into the storm system or onto other people's yards. So that's worth the discussion.
Yep. So as far as the walkways, let me take a little bit of a step back. So right now, the priority for the homeowner is to focus on the front because it's in disrepair. So when she first contacted us, we talked about everything as a whole, but the backyard was the wish list. It was the fireplace, and let's make that the space that she wants it to be, and we'll focus on the front later. But then she made it through the winter and saw what was happening, and lived through some rains, and said, well, I don't want water in my garage. So we switched gears completely on that, you know, to address the things that are the problem areas. And then, again, you know, from our standpoint, it is what it is. We try to do everything by the book with permits and doing things the right way, educating our clients. And, you know, this is a unique situation. We're so far over, and it's like, I look at it, and we're doing the math, and where do we reduce this from? And how did it even get to this point in the first place? So, that doesn't matter. What matters is, we're here now, and we've got some issues going on, and to do that, we need to ask for this variance.
Any other questions, comments at this point? Yes, Rebecca.
Just a question of clarification, maybe for staff. So what I understood from the email that you sent out earlier in the week is that it doesn't matter if it's a permeable or an impervious surface, right, as far as what's being asked for? So you're asking more in relation to the drainage and the water, if the permeable is a possibility?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But doesn't have anything to do with the overage of the, okay?
No, it would be that we would allow a variance of this degree. And the way I'm envisioning it, or thinking about it in my head as we talk, is that any walkable or drivable surface that is replaced needs to be replaced with a permeable surface. I think it's unreasonable to ask that a front concrete porch be permeable. But the driveway surfaces and the walkways, which I'm hearing some... surfaces and the walkways, which I'm hearing some amenability to, if those were replaced permeable, permeable, we still have the same variance because there's no credit for permeable surfaces. But we are alleviating a problem that this, that exists in this neighborhood and that potentially is, is added to by the property in its current condition. So if there's any improvements done or replacements done, if they could make those permeable, it can only help alleviate some of that problem.
Okay.
Allowing the variance, though.
Right. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding where everybody was coming from.
Yes, Michael.
So yeah, just to further understand, so is the idea that everything that's possible should be replaced? And maybe we haven't, you know, maybe that's a point of discussion or is there, is there some formula that says if you replace so much of it, you kind of get back to being even, right? And I don't, I don't know how easy that is to, to determine, but I guess that would be the other question is how do we, we determine how much?
And I would look to the applicant and the architect.
Yeah, so we can do our calculations off of that. It's all about the base that we use, the type of gravel. There's percentages to calculate volume and, and the depth is going to be the overall. So we'll have to work through that. And then that'll, there'll be a volume of storage that is going to be calculated at the end of all this. So I can work on that, you know, get going on it right away, really.
But I don't even know, maybe I'm missing something. I don't even know if we need to do that. We are, we are, as you said, we are where we are. We've got 54% of the property covered with hard surfaces. If, and if you, what we're saying is, is this the overage, which is primarily driveway and walkways and some of the bluestone, which I envision you're not going to change out the bluestone patio so that that stays the way it is. I don't know, but, but we're just saying regardless of the volume of water it holds, if you replace that driveway and walkways with permeable surface, you're improving the condition for the neighborhood.
It's better than it is.
I don't know that you need to do any calculations or that we need to, you know, pause this public hearing and reconvene. I don't think we need to do that to the applicant.
Sure, okay, that's, yeah, and that's good. That's great, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, overall, I think.
It'd be nice for them to give you those or someone else.
Well, at building, I mean, that's, you know, assuming everything would get approved, we still have to submit a, for a building permit and the specs that get reviewed and that's another discussion other than today.
Right, we could just make a one, one, one possibility, we just make it that any, any removed surface has to be replaced by a permit. And that just makes it simple.
And then, if you, if that gets approved and the variance is approved, then you're just dealing with your normal, the billing department and you're getting them happy like a normal permit.
Oh, you're dealing with code at that point.
Yeah, and that's all great.
Yeah.
So any removed surface, so if we were to remove a small section of that bluestone patio that I showed with that bench on it, or if we did a, if we did a fireplace and we were going to reduce the overall square footage of the patio, does that mean that that too would fall under having to be switched over to permeable?
Well, obviously a fireplace can't be permeable, so.
Right, the fireplace couldn't, but the patio.
We just make an exception for everything but the fireplace exception.
So the patio, right. So if this were to be grandfathered in and we put our pa, our fireplace in, in this little section over here, because we are changing this, would then change the rest?
If you haven't removed part of it, then you don't need to do permeable. But if you decide, boy, I like the look of this fireplace and this kind of brick, let's make the patio that brick, you need to make a complimentary permeable patio to complement the fireplace.
Yeah, just so I'm clear, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
And we should specify, this doesn't mean when you replace the steps or porch.
Right, I say, I say walkway or driveway. Because porch is not a walkway. You don't need, you can pour concrete, cover that with your brick.
Or patio.
Yeah, well.
So anything at surface level, really?
I think they're just saying.
So this could be permeable.
Suppose in the future she decides she wants to put in a whole new patio, like you just said, then.
Then she put in a permeable.
Right, so.
Anything that's a walk, a walking surface, a porch is, is more of an entry surface, right? So.
Say anything that's at ground level.
Yeah. That's, that's a good point.
Right, and we install it differently and treat it differently in the landscape as well because it's something that you're stepping up on and wa, it's, you've got to mortar it or glue it or you can't just put it on a gravel base.
And you're going to be in there messing around with it anyway, so that's, you put the subbase in there.
Right.
Okay. Seems reasonable.
So what I'm hearing is you, the applicant and the architect are amenable to that type of condition?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay, any other questions, comments at this point?
Do we, just a question for staff. Do we know if, how this got to this point? It is so far over and do we know if there's other situations in this neighborhood that are similar that we're likely to see?
Yeah, I think there are, there are a lot of instances in the community of lot coverage overages just from improvements that have occurred in the past. From what we can tell, I think the original house is where you have these six windows right here. And then in 2001, it was added on to and the garage was moved around to the front. And as far as we can tell, all these improvements took place in that massive remodel in 2000 and then this is where we are today.
How did they ever get permits to do this?
That's a great question.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments at this point? Got a public hearing, see if any public wants to talk, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so at this point, we'll move on to public comment. Sir? Nope. And that means there's no one here in City Hall who wishes to testify. Is there anyone online who wishes to testify in this matter? If so, please use the raise hand function on your application so you can be recognized by the commission.
No hands being raised right now.
Okay, one more time. And we do have some people online, so if you wish to speak on this matter, please use the raise hand function on your application so you can be recognized by the commission to speak. Nope. Okay, so no public comment. Other than, we had, we had some, some people submit things on the website, so that, that bad's public comment, no testimony. Should be clear on that. We did get comments, just not a testimony.
Before we close the public hearing, because I'd be interested in some feedback from the applicant and the architect, I did come up with a condition that I thought I'd read and if it didn't work, then we, then we can actually get some feedback from them. Is that?
This is the time to do it.
Right, okay. So in addition to, you know, the request, subject to the findings of fact, then I'd say plus a condition that any removed and replaced surface at grade level, i.e. driveways, walkways and patios, comma, not entrance stoops or porches, be replaced with permeable paver materials. Just wanted to give you an opportunity to digest that and see if that, if that's workable for you.
The only, the only thing I just want to make sure is this property is kind of odd because it does have retention walls on three, on three sides of it.
Mm-hmm.
So obviously those can't be permeable, so.
Right.
Ma'am, I guess you're going to have to please come up to the podium and speak, please. I always forget that, that we have, we have people remotely and they can't hear your testimony.
So the property is rather unique in the fact that it has retention walls on three sides. And so I just want to make sure that, I mean, obviously those sides may eventually go or have to be repaired, which, you know, would be, obviously come to me because it's on the property. And I just want to make sure, I don't think there's, that might be more like a stupor foundation issue, wouldn't be permeable, correct? Am I thinking the correct way?
Right.
Okay. That's all, I wanted to make sure that it was good, get into something odd.
I could modify that to say not entrance stoops, porches or retaining walls.
Yeah, and, yeah, you want that to be a solid concrete surface, yeah.
Vertical surfaces?
Yeah, yeah, vertical surface slash retaining wall.
Yep.
Any other comments on the commission on that? Okay. Okay. Move to close the public.
Move to close the public hearing?
Madaskil second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Evans.
Evans, aye.
Slifka.
Slifka, aye.
Holloman.
Holloman, aye.
Madaskil.
Madaskil, aye.
Stocking.
Stocking, aye.
Mead.
Mead, aye.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, seeing that we've had rigorous discussion and already I'm ready to make a motion.
And I'm ready to hear it.
I'd like to make a motion for a variance to increase the permitted lot coverage from 40% to 53.54% for the property located at 729 Hawthorne Lane, Geneva, Illinois, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report, plus a condition that any removed and replaced surface at grade level, i.e. driveways, walkways and patios, but not entrance stoops, porches or vertical surfaces such as retaining walls, comma, be replaced with permeable paver materials.
Second, Slifka.
Moved and seconded. The roll, please.
Slifka.
Slifka, aye.
Holloman.
Holloman, aye.
Madaskil.
Madaskil, aye.
Stocking.
Stocking, aye.
Mead.
Mead, aye.
Evans.
Evans, aye.
It passes.
All right, very good.
Okay. Let me find a city council date.
Council agenda.
So this recommendation from the planning zoning commission will go before the city council on Monday, November 7th at 7:00 PM here in the city council chambers. And we'll be sure to follow up with you before then.
Do we have to attend or should we plan to attend?
It's always encouraged to attend, just in case any aldermen or the mayor have questions, so.
All right, thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Okay, so our next item on the agenda is public comment. So this is a, gives the opportunity for people to address the commission. So if you're online and you wish to talk to us, please use the raise hand function and be recognized to speak. And anyone here in City Hall can certainly talk to us if they so choose. And so I don't believe anybody has raised their hand to talk to us, so we'll move on to, just check once more, make sure. Okay? So we'll move on to other business.
Okay, so just provide you a quick update on active applications. Staff is currently wrapping up their second round of review on the Bullock campus, which is the large proposed campus for the Antunes Corporation, south Division Street and right along Geneva Drive and east of Kirk Road. Okay. Wrapping up our, like I said, wrapping up our second round of review comments. So that project is continuing to move forward towards a public hearing at some point in the future. And then also we have the Venture Park Light Industrial Development. They're seeking annexation, comprehensive plan amendment and zoning map amendment for a proposed light industrial development east of Kirk Road and north of Fabian Parkway. We just got their second round of materials for us to review again, so that's, that project's also in review. Those are the two active applications we have right now with status updates. Others, no change.
Okay. Dunkin' Donuts.
Great.
I'm waiting for that.
Who made the doughnuts?
Yeah, but it's there, it's still there.
They ever opened, were you having doughnuts at that meeting?
Going. That's an outing. I think we're, yeah, I think we're going.
Hope they didn't make them already.
They shouldn't have been rocking. I noticed that the Geneva Pharmacy's no longer there.
It says for sale.
It closed.
That's unfortunate.
I had coffee with a guy who worked there and.
Yeah, I just saw that last weekend. I drove by, I couldn't believe it.
Yeah.
Spent a lot of money on it.
I hope somebody goes in there, they can sell it.
Somebody, yeah, I mean, that's a nice, did a beautiful job.
It's a nice building.
Did a nice job on it.
Yeah, it's just.
It's a shame.
I mean, I guess it just didn't pan out, I see. But yeah, I saw that, I was like, whoa. Yeah, because I always, I was wondering about that because he said his clients were going to be elderly and I'm like, well, they're going to get out of the car and walk.
We might need our mics on if we haven't adjourned yet.
I know, but I've just, okay. We just like talking, so.
I know.
Ma'am, go ahead, let's make it official.
Move to adjourn.
All right. That's it, now you can turn.